... of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored to Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I do not see Reverend Orr here tonight. Would anybody like to say the prayer? Charlie, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you do for us and all the things that you're going to be doing for us. Father, I just ask that you be with this council tonight as we bring issues in front of us, that we make the best decisions that we can make, and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Charlie. Item three, audit anticipation, it's on the video screen. A couple of things. We are at Skelton Crew tonight in deference to the current situation. Full council, though, in the future, we may meet differently. The Attorney General and the Governor gave us permission as of yesterday to suspend some of the open meeting rules and do teleconference. I don't know if we'll do that. We will play it by ear. If it gets really bad, we may counsel a council meeting. It just depends. But please be flexible, and folks watching, please be patient with us. We're trying to figure all this out. Welcome the folks watching online. I hope you can see and hear us well. I appreciate you tuning in. A couple of things I want to just announce. I think everybody knows where we are with the coronavirus. On Friday, March 13th, the Tarrant County Judge Glenn Whitley issued a disaster alert. I guess it's called an emergency declaration for Tarrant County. That can be found on tarrantcounty.com if you would like to read it. It talked about large gatherings and other advice. We will follow all the Tarrant County guidance. We follow their emergency management system. So we will follow their recommendations. If any more come out, I hear potentially today or tomorrow, new guidelines are going to come out, even more stringent guidelines. I don't know those yet. There was a conference call today, there'll be another one tomorrow, so we will pay attention to those and see what comes of those. So just be aware. The most up-to-date thing on coronavirus can be found at tarrantcounty.com. They've got a page, recommendations, they've got health things, they've got a number to call, they've got all kinds of information. So I would encourage any citizens out there, if you've got questions, go to tarrantcounty.com. Their public health department does a great job on that, and that's what we will be following as well. So stay safe, stay clean. We will try to do some social distancing here tonight. The biggest advice I give to folks, really wash your hands, honestly, with soap and water. Speaking as a microbiologist, the best thing you need to kill a virus, soap and cheap bar of soap, wash your hands well. That's honestly that. Don't shake hands, don't hug. I know it's weird, but just try to do that for the next few weeks, and we can lick this thing. But stay safe out there, buddy. So we will move back to our regular agenda. Item number four, the consent agenda. Action regarding minutes of March 3rd. B, action regarding service agreement with Diversified Processing Consulting, Inc. C, action regarding pipeline licensing agreement with Burnet and Northern Santa Fe. D, action regarding conflict waiver to Alconum Legal Counsel representation with TOES for creation of interlocal agreement. E, action regarding interlocal agreement with Fort Worth for fire dispatch. F, action regarding amendment number two to an individual project order with Kimley Horn. Any questions? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item F, please.
F, okay. Then I will entertain a motion for A through E.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moving...
To approve A through E under consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All those in favor raise your hand. Those opposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, we have a full house this evening. So moving on to F, which is, as I pull it up, action regarding amendment number two to an individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for McElroy Boulevard curb and gutter replacement. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. The purpose for this item is we had, I guess amendment number one was to go ahead and advertise for construction, the curb and gutter replacement along East McElroy. We had a flurry of phone calls from contractors asking about vertical control, and as we looked at that, it made a lot of sense, just based on the topography of the roadway and the inundation of the curb line, we decided it was best to go ahead and survey and provide them some grades to go by. So it's not a full design by any means, it's just setting grades to make sure that we have no ponds in the gutter line, et cetera, et cetera. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Yeah, I have a question, sir. Task number three, the survey, was that an oversight or just...
No, the original intent of the contract was just to replace the curb and gutter in the same alignment, but the survey is necessary to go ahead and determine what the grades are, what the elevation, the curb line is, and then Kimley Horn, using that information, is going to set grades, just as if it were a reconstruction project. And the contractor will use that information then to set grades as he constructs them so that we have a good grade along the roadway.
Did we not have that information before or...
No, we have no curb grades on McElroy, no records of what the original design was.
Okay, so I guess my question is, I was kind of curious, why was this not thought of before?
Because we thought that there was sufficient information in the field for the contractor to go ahead and set those grades, and they are, you know, some contractors could set those grades, but we feel it's best just to perform that for them, to reduce the uncertainty, and to ensure that we have positive drainage along the roadway. Again, it's not a full design, so they're not looking at drainage capacity within the roadway, it's just simply to have uniform curb grades along the roadway.
Okay.
So that information doesn't exist today without this task.
Any other questions?
Just have a request. Rick, is it possible, since we're going to be going back to original NGS monuments, to pull into this location, can we go ahead and set some of our own benchmarks in the region that belong to us? Can we have them do that when they do it?
We can. I'll ask Kimley Horn if they can set some monumentation for us. I mean, I don't know what USGS monuments are in Saginaw today, so I don't know what kind of information is there, but yeah, there will be, again, X, Y, Z coordinates set as part of this task for the contractors, so they will have control to work off of when they do set their grades.
So will we get to the work on the overpass, or are we going to be faced with the same situation for vertical control?
There are benchmark data that's required in a set of plans, so that benchmark should be in the plans now. Whether or not that's to a USGS standard, probably not. You know, they're benchmarks that the engineer has set in the field.
But we require the contractor to verify the benchmark, right?
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? If not, I will entertain a motion on four F.
We approve four F as presented.
All those in favor raise your hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, item number five, presentation of 2019 Economic Excellence Award from Texas Economic Development Council. Gabe's not here, Keith's not here as well, we gave Keith a night off. So what this is, this is an economic development recommendation based on a certain threshold. You can see in your packet, it says only 53 organizations in the state of Texas received this last year, including us. This is the first, my understanding, this is the first time we've received this, I believe. So that's an excellent step in the right direction from an economic development perspective. This is due to a lot of work that's been done by a lot of folks here, including Gabe and Keith. We won't do a major presentation tonight, but you can read about it, it's an excellent thing, it's a great step forward for us, so well done to the folks. Moving forward to item number six. Item six is consideration action regarding adoption of resolution 2020-06, physical year 2020, community development block grant project for new sidewalk construction, 215 to 500 blocks of Bluebonnet Street. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Every two years, the city typically applies for a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant funding, to do work in target areas in the city. This particular application is to provide a sidewalk just adjacent, just to the east here of City Hall, along Bluebonnet. If you could pull that one exhibit up, this is not, this is an exhibit that's not in the packet, but the yellow line is showing the ultimate loop for that sidewalk, which will go down Bluebonnet and Opel and Southern. Basically, will provide access to the elementary school from that neighborhood, which is basically without sidewalk and ramps, so this will be a good first step. You know, a couple of meetings ago, we provided some priority projects and sidewalk improvements was one of those, and we were looking particularly adjacent to schools, we knew that this project was in the works. In fact, as we have looked at school locations within Saginaw, this is the only school in Saginaw that really, the neighborhood has little or no sidewalks, so this would be a high candidate for future sidewalk improvements beyond this project. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those. I will say this, the plan is, I just want to add, that the plan is, over the next two additional funding cycles through CDBG, that we will complete the remainder of this work. This particular grant will only do the work along Bluebonnet, which is the further east.
I think everybody knows this, but just to recap, you know, the CDBG grants are only for a certain economic area of your city, and that area for us is strong. It used to be a larger area. It's based on incomes, household income, so there's only limited space in Saginaw we have to do these. We are very limited, so any place we can, we should take advantage of it. It's a great program. I can tell you, I've been on this committee before in Tarrant County. Other cities take advantage of a lot, so we need to as well, if the money's there. And like you said, we need more sidewalks. We talked about it before. Cindy brought up a great point about some of our aging sidewalks, or lack thereof, so... Any other questions?
One.
Yes, Cindy.
Are these going to be the standard sidewalk widths that we have currently in that part of the city, or are they going to be wider?
They'll be five-foot sidewalk width, which is ADA standard.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Council, other questions?
No, sir.
If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're in a public, oh, my bad, I did not read that. So 6:11, we're in a public hearing. Any questions? I'm sorry. My mistake. So that was all a public hearing? You have a question? No, go ahead, please, ma'am.
I have a question, this road by accident, I wasn't real sure.
Sure.
I've driven down Bluebonnet a hundred times, just couldn't really know this one.
Could you say your name and address for us?
Kelly Stewart, 404 Mustang Drive.
Thank you.
And it's needed. It's right there at the back of Saginaw Elementary, and I've never really noticed it didn't have sidewalks, but it's definitely needed. So, no questions?
Good point. No, thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, then at 6:12, we're out of a public hearing. Now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the CB, whatever.
Resolution 2020-06.
Yeah, 2020-06. Charlie was saying something.
Okay.
2020-06.
He's trying to second. Charlie, second. All those in favor?
I thought I was doing something wrong.
Those opposed? Excellent. No, you did go. All right, moving on. Item number seven, public hearing. So at 6:12, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission regarding Amendment of zoning ordinance 2002.04, amending the regulations for parking lot off premises. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. This item has really been brought about as a phenomenon, I guess, development that we've seen in the industrial area. In particular, one next to City Public Works Department. There is a site there that allows business, in this particular case, Amazon, to lease space and to use that for off-premises, vehicle storage, basically, and then also will send those vehicles out from that location. Well, there's several hundred, as I'm sure people have experienced throughout the city, so this new use is intended to put that under a specific use permit, or, that's correct. So we will have an opportunity to look at the impacts of traffic from those sorts of uses, and then to have some sort of mitigation or even denial of that use. And again, those uses are the non-residential uses that you see in the table, in the body of the memo, so if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those without stuttering.
Council, other questions?
So, excuse me, if we were to pass this, would it have an effect on the current situation, or only those in the future?
No, they're grandfathered, they're grandfathered use since they've already been permitted.
Council, other questions?
That was a question that I had in my mind, I'm just, it's quite a, it is quite a traffic impact.
It is.
I guess we could call Jeff Bezos and ask him for a favor.
What you do that, Patrick? I'll put you on that, buddy. You get that kind of pull, man, go for it. All right. Any other questions, Council? We're in a public hearing. Anybody wants, anybody from the huge audience tonight would like to comment, ask a question on this? If not, 6:14, we're out of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion. Mayor?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2020-06, regulating off-site parking, which is to amend ordinance number 2002-04.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charles. All those in favor raise your hand. All those opposed? Moving forward.
Just one housekeeping item.
Sure.
Looks like we have duplicate 2020-06. So I noticed that our resolution, previous resolution adopting the block grant is 2020-06, and, oh, resolution versus ordinance. Thank you. I'm sorry.
You know, you can't stump Janice.
I'm telling you. I'm sorry for that.
It's all right.
I'm fully capable of making that error, though. I'm glad that you're looking.
Okay. All right, so number eight. At 6:16, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation planning zoning, writing amendment to zoning ordinance 2002.04, amending the regulations for an auto car wash. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
Okay, this is an existing use. Recall that we do have an overlay on the Boulevard that prohibits car washes. The thinking here was that we would go ahead and amend the use table to require a special use permit for community commercial. Today, it's permitted by right, so it will allow us to at least look to see whether it's compatible with existing surrounding development. So that's the only change there. If you've got any questions, P and Z recommended you announce to me that you adopt the new ordinance.
This does say auto car wash. What about for trucks that follow under the same?
I'm not sure that there is a truck in the use table. We can look at it and...
Like 18-wheelers, big trucks.
If it's necessary, we can bring back a similar ordinance for that. I don't know if there is a truck car wash use off the top of my head.
Well, let's take a look at that. Okay.
It doesn't mean automatic car wash?
It means auto as in car, right?
Yes.
It is auto as in car, not as in automatic?
Any kind of car wash.
Okay.
I read it as auto as automobile, but it could, auto could mean automatic.
Yeah, it means it's automobiles, what the reference is to.
Okay. Yeah. Council, other questions?
This does apply citywide, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Audience? Okay. If not, then 6:18, I'll take it out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 2020-07 as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor raise your hand. Those opposed? There is none. Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Item number nine, consideration action regarding individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for design of North Old Decatur Road. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trice.
All right, again, two council meetings ago, we went through a list of projects for interim design, and this was one of the projects that was put up for consideration, and so Kimley Horn, this is an IPO to begin that design work. Have any questions? Try to answer those for you.
Council questions? Do we have a timeline for this, potentially? Just the design?
For the design, I wouldn't expect it to last more than four to six months. The right of way is there. The drainage has some challenges, but it shouldn't be a lengthy design process.
Okay. Council questions? Mr. Far, can I, Charles? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to consider the action regarding individual project order with Kimley Horn for the design of Old Decatur Road.
Okay. Cindy, second. All those in favor raise your hand. Those opposed? There is none. Excellent. Thank you, Rick.
Yep.
Item number, let me get on here. Number 10, consideration action regarding an award for contract for 2020 annual mowing contract. Back to Rick Trice.
This was considered and continued, I guess, last week or last meeting. This is recommending an award of contract for city mowing. There was a question by Councilmember Big Horse, and we provided a memo in your packet to try to answer those questions. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those if I could talk.
Council questions?
I have a small comment, though.
Sure.
Whoever gets this bid, could you tell them not to do donuts? I know that people don't watch that, but sometimes when they mow, they do donuts in front of the senior citizens and in front of over here.
I think that's our staff doing that. No, I'm just...
All the tires of the bus, Rick. I even...
And I know they're just trying to hurry and everything, but sometimes they pile down and make ruts, you know, and it looks bad, so...
Certainly.
Council, other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the mowing contract as presented.
Thank you, Patrick. I'll second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Moving forward, let me find it.
Mayor, if I could interrupt you, I just looked at the use table, there is not a truck wash station, so...
Okay. All right, item number 11, consideration action regarding resolution 2020-10, adopting financial management policies. For that, Director Finance, Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a formal presentation. We, if you recall, we started talking about having officially approved financial management policies back in May of 2018, and for one reason or another, different things have come up, different discussions, and here we are in March of 2020, still with no final approved financial management policies. So as I mentioned, I don't have a specific presentation. We can answer questions, we can go through section by section, but I would hope that we could at least approve the things that we all agree on, if nothing else. So I'm open to however you want to go through it, if you want to go through the financial management policies. The latest version that I, that is in your packet, the black writing, is the original staff-proposed financial management policies. The mayor and councilmember Farr got together and that's what, and had some comments, and that's what the red writing is in your financial management policies. And then Gabe, the mayor, and I met again, and that's what the blue comments are in there. So I'll just, at your pleasure, we'll, whatever it is you all want to do, if you have specific questions, I'll try to answer those. We can go section by section, or whatever the will of the council is.
Sure, thank you, Kim. So a little background on this, you know, we have never had a financial policies document, ever. So this is a first for us. We wrote it up, it was drafted a couple of years ago, we went through it. After Patrick and I met, I took the action item to take it to staff and talk to them, and I sat on that for a while, I delayed for many reasons, basically because I just deprioritized it, so that's my bad. But that's where we are. I wanted to get staff input as well and bring back to the council, so we can do a couple of things tonight. We can go through it, approve it or not approve it tonight, we can go through it and make changes, we can go through it, think about it, and bring it back. There's no urgency to do it tonight. I want to do it right. So we can, I'm glad to go through it tonight, answer questions, take action items, put it on the next council agenda for approval. I don't want to rush this, I want to do it right. So really, what is the council's pleasure? How would y'all like to approach this? We've got options, and we've got time, so I'd like to hear from y'all what you think.
Maybe the best way to approach it is for Kim to just ask if anybody has any questions on section one, discuss that.
I discussed the change.
Section two, discuss that, whatever. There may be some sections that are pretty cut and dried that don't require any discussion.
And that's, I'm happy to do that. What would the rest of the council, what do y'all think? How would you like to approach this? What do y'all think?
I could offer up something maybe even simpler.
Sure.
The feedback that staff has given, I'm in agreement with a lot of the feedback that staff has given. There are a few clarifications that I have, and I think it's just really a matter of discussing and talking through those. I don't see any reason that we couldn't reach agreement tonight, so...
If the rest of the council is fine with that, I'm fine with that. Mr. Beasley, what do you think?
That's fine.
You good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Y'all good with that? Let's roll through it like that, then. All right.
Okay.
So we're at section two. I don't think there's any, there, citizen volunteer, we just have to worry about who do who we get and how to do that, that's fine. Just consider that. Moving down to section, where are we? I'm strolling, I'm scrolling.
It's section seven.
Seven, operating budget definitions.
Yeah, and this is, this is one, first area of clarification that I want to make sure we're all on the same page. At least what I've communicated and what's come back doesn't sound like we're saying the same thing, so I just want to make sure we're saying the same thing. Items one through four that I've added in here were not really intended to communicate what our 2021 calendar is. What was intended here is that each of these four items are agendas for four workshops. And I don't think we're calling out specific workshops in our calendar, I think what we're doing is we're identifying things that we're going to be talking about at particular, at each individual council meeting. And an example of that would be Tuesday 5:5, preliminary budget issues, would be a discussion topic in that meeting, and I'm not sure what we're going to be talking about in those items. And really, what I was doing here was communicating what at least my expectations would be in a workshop, the first workshop, we would talk about key staff meeting dates, we would talk about the workshop schedule itself, we would talk about the TAD information release dates, which we know that pretty much, when they're going to be releasing that information, but for new council members and people coming on board, I think a first workshop meeting just addressing these things and letting everybody know what to expect at the next workshop would be appropriate. Required council action dates so that everybody can get on the same page as to when they're going to need to take action. And it's really just, it's a workshop agenda. That's all it is.
And I would recommend that we include, we could make a more detailed budget calendar...
Perfect.
Instead of having it on our financial...
I think that's a perfect idea. I think if we can take these four items and maybe pick a Tuesday, four Tuesdays out of the calendar, and put these items as calendared activities in the calendar itself, I'm perfectly fine with that, and not addressing it in this document.
Staff is certainly willing to...
Everybody else okay with that? Sounds good?
Okay.
Moving forward. Where are we now? Page seven, C and D, I guess D?
Fine.
Adoption process?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. State law? All right. Moving forward, where are we? Eight, capital improvement plan.
Did we, did we skip number seven? Page seven? Sorry, I'm going...
Yes, page seven. So we were looking at D, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
And E?
E? On forecasting?
Yeah.
No, I have no problem with that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we're to 8.
I know what the state has done to us since we started this discussion, so.
So, we're on 8, Capital Improvements Plan, all right? So, Section 3.
Yes.
Is there anybody on that page? Okay. Go ahead.
So, the only, the only concern that I have here is, I think 5/7ths is pretty strong. I think that it should be at least a affirmative vote of 4, not 3. So, in, in the event that 3 council members, or 5 council members show up and the majority is 3, I would be fine with it being a affirmative vote of 4 in this case. This is item number 4.
So, instead of saying majority, we say a vote of 4?
Yeah. Affirmative vote of 4 council members. Instead of 5/7ths.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, that sounds fair. All right. Are we on 5? Cost overrun?
One second. Did I, did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry, 5, yes. Same thing. Just an affirmative vote of 4, not 5/7ths.
Okay. Everybody else good with that? Mary, go ahead.
We have had occasions where we have only had a simple forum at the meetings, or maybe if we just had 5 people at the meeting, would you still want there to be 4 affirmatives? If we had only 5 people at the meeting, you wouldn't want 3/5 to.
Yes, ma'am, that's the intent, and what I'm communicating here is that since these are significant financial decisions that are being made, I, I think that the majority of the council should be represented, which is 4.
The entire council, the full sitting council.
Yeah, 4 affirmative votes. Because if, if we're making it, I'll give you an example. The overpass overrun at 2.5 million, over our original budget, I would not want 3 council members making that decision. I would want 4 council members making that decision. And, and it's just, it needs to have the full weight and effect of the council and not, 5 people were able to show up, 3 people voted in the affirmative, so 3 people made that decision. That's what I'm getting at.
Now, what if we only had 4 people here?
It would require all 4.
All 4.
And the other difference is that you're asking, if I recall, this is the section that you wanted a public hearing, so.
I'm fine not having a public hearing.
Okay, just a regular part of a city council meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
We can strike the public hearing, and as long as we have the full weight of the council, a majority.
The sitting council, the full sitting council.
Yes.
That's fair. All right, moving forward to page. Are we on Debt Management Act 10?
We, I think we skipped the cost escalation factor.
And I'm fine with that.
You're fine with the?
I think 8% per year is probably okay in strong markets, but we may need to evaluate that from year to year.
Okay. So, my suggestion was that we, we, I think everyone agrees there should be a cost escalation factor, and we'll just discuss it when we discuss our CIP. So, you're in agreement with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good. Do we have any que, all right, to Section X or 10, Debt Management, it's highlighted, but I don't know if we have any questions there.
The reason that that was highlighted in yellow was we had, there was a point in time where we had a finance and audit committee, and that was added at the time just to elaborate on the different types of debt. It wasn't part of the original, but it was part of the revised staff recommended.
Okay. Everybody okay with C? Then 3, Certificates of Obligation, on page 13.
This is the same thing with, where I'm asking for 5/7ths in a public hearing. I think that a public hearing is required here by law, but what I'm, what I would ask is that we have a sitting council majority, 4 favorable votes. And this is, this falls back to, we are making a financial decision to obligate debt, obligate the taxpayer to debt, and I think it would be reasonable for us to require 4 council members approve that rather than 3 in a majority.
Everybody okay with that? We good? What about the note about the state requires 45-day public notice?
That was just a comment to let you know that there are state requirements that we comply with automatically that may not necessarily be stated in our financial management policies, but it's just assumed that, of course, we're going to follow.
It's built in here, anything state law, we have to follow, regardless of what we say in our financial policy. That's just the law, so that's an assumption that sort of underwrites all this. Number 4, Self-Supporting GO.
This is the same thing, 4 fit, that 5/7ths just be changed to 4 votes, 4 favorable votes.
Okay.
Instead of 5/7ths.
I'm okay with that. Everybody else good with that? Any issues? Number 5, Internal Borrowing.
Same thing, the 5/7ths changed to 4.
And I'm reading the staff notes, City Council, Internal Appropriations, the council public comment could be heard without a formal, formal public hearing, okay.
Okay, so the borrowing of.
So, no public hearing, but 4?
Wait, 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 actually, this was not, this was not 4. This is within a period not to exceed 5 years.
Ah.
So, I. This is a little more complicated, and I think, I believe that councils can handle this at the time that it arises. I don't know that we have to have this limitation built into it, and I'm fine taking the limitation out.
Okay, so leave it as staff had originally had it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's all the, that's all the staff comment was, was that, you know, it's going to be few ti, few and far between, probably, and the council, okay.
And I think the, the council will be able to consider the facts as they come at that time.
Right, okay.
So, page 14E is also highlighted as well on subject matter experts and advisors.
Same thing, that was added at a finance and audit committee meeting.
Moving forward to F, page 15F, Debt Capacity.
Yeah, this is, this is one that I've, I want to be careful with, and it's, although the state says that we can, we can authorize a 250 levy, a $2.50 levy, our charter says $1.50. And our charter can override the state rule. We can be more stringent, we just can't be greater than.
Right.
And in our charter, our, our taxation limitation period, 1304, is the maximum tax rate shall not exceed $1.50. It's stated plainly. So, I don't know how we can say we can charge 250.
So, 250 is what state law says, right?
State law says 250, but our charter supersedes that. It sets the limit at 150.
And we can make it match the, the city charter.
And that's all I'm asking, is that we match the city charter, and if we want to increase it, we can take it to the voters, not this year, but next. Right? For another charter election.
Charter is, is what it is. Everybody okay with that? We follow the city charter, that's, that's very reasonable, yeah. Makes sense. Then 2.
Yes, so, Kim, can you, can you tell me what your thoughts are about a debt schedule versus a debt reduction plan? And the reason I'm saying that is that a debt schedule, would that apply to new debt that we're taking, taking on? Or would we actually restructure existing debt with a new debt schedule? Because in my mind, that latter is a debt reduction plan.
So, so, so you, that's skipping to number 3. Number 2?
I had a question, number 2 first.
Vote.
About the?
I think, I think it's, we're saying the same thing, are we not?
I think on 3, yes, I, I think we're saying the same thing on 3. Now, on 2, where we're talking about 5%, 5% of the taxable value? I don't believe that that is a charter. I don't think that's, I don't think that's regulated by the charter.
No, it's not.
I think that it was originally regulated in the, in previous financial, written financial plans.
It's, it's been guidelines that we've used in practice, but was never approved by anybody.
Okay.
We, we were originally going to take them out in order to just get the financial management policies approved, that's why they were crossed out, and then we were going to wait until the long-range financial plan. And since then, we have had a financial, long-range financial plan. And I went through and looked in the 5, we're still well under the 5%. In fact, we are currently at 1.42%. So, I mean, we, we don't need it, it's something that we'll, in the foreseeable future, be under unless something unusual happens. We can leave it in, we can take it out.
My only ask is, I, I don't see a reason to remove the limit. The, the limit is something that we could, as a council, change in the future, but I think it's a good idea to establish a limit, and we just have that setting out there so that someone knows, hey, we're approaching this limit, we may need to consider either not financing something or changing that limit. I, I just, I'm much more comfortable having limits applied, especially when we're talking about going to a voter with a $100 million bond program in the near future. I like to have limits in place that kind of throttle what we do and when we do it.
What's counsel think about this? We're on number 2, we're discussing number 2. You scroll up a little bit, off, we're still, I'm not, yeah, we're number 2. What does everybody else think about number 2, the 5%? You okay with that? Everybody good with that? All right. 5% it is? I'm fine with that.
Okay, so back to number 3.
Number 3. So, we're really talking about plan versus schedule. Is a debt reduction plan part of the, or is the schedule part of the plan, basically, right?
Well, and, and my point I was just trying to make was, there will be no debt issued unless the city council approves it. So, you will have a schedule at any point in time. If you exceed the 35%, it's not going to be a surprise to anyone. I mean, you're going to have a schedule in front of you showing at what point you're going to exceed the 35%. So, there won't be a debt reduction plan necessary. A council will either approve the plan, approve the schedule, or not approve the schedule. In, in other words, not approve the debt that requires you to go over whatever 35% or whatever threshold that council decides is appropriate. So, that's what I was trying to get at. It's not like, like staff or anyone else is going to go issue debt that puts you over 35%. You're going to know it when it's presented to you.
And I, I understand that. I think what, what my thinking is here is, if we are going to exceed 35% of our tax rate with debt, not any one council member is going to be in a position to, to put together a strategy or articulate a strategy to get us back under 35% within a certain timeframe. But if we, if we set those rules in, in motion, or we set it as a, as guidelines, what that allows us to do is go ahead and allow us to increase that debt service capacity to, say, 40% and go ahead and vote on the measure and allow it to move forward, but at the same time, we have a plan presented to us that says, hey, we're at 40% of our tax rate in debt today, but here's our plan to get it back down to 35% over the next 5 years. That's really the intent, because I, I don't want to be in a position where I know we've got to make a, a hard decision on a CIP project, and it's going to get us to 45% and vote it down simply because we're over the 35%. We know at some point in time, we're going to go over 35%, and it's just going to happen. But what I would like to see when that's presented, okay, we are going to exceed 35%, we're going to go to 45, but here's the next thing. This is when we're going to get back down below 35. Just a forecast showing here's, here's when we're going to get back down below 35%. And what I'm talking about is if, if our tax rate's a dollar, 35 cents versus 65 cents, 65 cents is going towards our M&amp;O, and 35 cents is going towards, you know, debt. At some point in time, that debt's going to get to 45 cents, and we'd like to see it go back down to 35 cents.
Okay, I have a recommendation then. Why don't we take out the words debt reduction and just say, present a plan to ensure its return to 35%?
I'm perfectly.
Because it may not necessarily be that debt will be reduced, but the values would be such that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. It's, they're, they're going to vector, they're going in the same direction.
Yes.
One down and one up.
Okay.
I want us to go into this with our eyes open, so we know what we're getting into. Counselors should know exactly what you're voting for and what it means and the implications. That's really what we're saying. So, we know, not just short-term, but long-term, what our vote means and what we're doing. I think that's very fair. What does everybody else think? Okay with that? You good? Okay. Moving forward to G, which is Debt Management Analysis. I think we're okay with that.
I have no other comments. I'm okay with everything else.
We good with that one, Kim? Kim, you're good with the G part, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see what else was on here, I just, from my other, my memory. Budget year, budget year, okay. State law, state law. Okay. Any, counsel, any other questions on this plan? Any other questions, concerns, issues? Everybody to a point where we're happy with it? Keep, keep, we can, we can revise this anytime. We can come back in 6 months, a year, and take a look at this again if we want to.
Absolutely, and we'll, at minimum, look at it every 5 years.
Yeah. It is a, I consider it a living document, so we can look at it and say, hey, but it's a good guideline. A lot of stuff we've been doing is sort of unwritten, and we talked about that for a long time, but this is good to put it down. So, I think it's a great step. So, everybody good? Everybody's good, then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the financial policies as modified.
I second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Excellent. All those opposed, none, all right. What else we got? That's it. Thankfully, there's no executive session, right? Entertained a motion.
Move, adjourn.
All those in favor? 6:44, we're out of here. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
Hey Doug, I have a question.
Yeah?